To the flag, the United States of America, and to their calling for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting through order. Go call.
Mayor Westerberry?
Yes.
Sandkamp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
No, Frank is absent.
Anybody who likes to speak to the council in public forum? Now, I'm going to give motion to, before we do the consent agenda, to add the historic preservation on that agenda. Your motion to add that?
I'll make it. Second.
Go call.
Jim, were you that one?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Sandkamp?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
You'll be on between five and six.
Today.
Is there motion to approve the consent agenda? So.
I'll second it.
Go call.
Waltman?
Yes.
Sandkamp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Public Works Report.
Working on the water line, set the statute. The community center came up with a plan to set the second statute. Worked on wall number three, the final part to make it so it doesn't leak at all. Came in today. When we're done with the water line, we'll work on that. We did citywide cleanup, mowing. We bought, we had to get new flooring for the cabins. The linoleum in there is bubbling up. Somebody's going to trip and hurt. Wall, lo- wall lake lumber. I always get the two confused. Gave us a heck of a deal on what they would say is the industrial kind of like plank laminate flooring. And we're going to be into it for way less than eight hundred bucks. So we'll have both cabins done. And just trying to keep everything around it.
Anybody have any questions for Jason? Move on, George.
So the month of April, things have been kind of picking up. We have five hundred and twenty-five lab calls. I was gone all last week for an instructor course for medicine. Today, we just got a third AED. That's for my vehicle. So all vehicles are outfitted with an AED. Christian, since I was gone, kind of took over. He's been going through older accounts, finding things that Royce did. Finding things that Royce did with, I guess, some type of children's thing. And we have some money in the account, so we can get some stickers and coloring books from them for this summer. So that's really it. Just pre-planning for summer, getting ready.
When are the bobbleheads going to be for sale?
Oh, I wish. I wish.
Did you just say bobblehead?
Yeah.
I may or may not have done those.
I don't have Facebook.
I may or may not have done those in the past.
Listen.
Get some city merch.
I will pay. So after that post, Christian calls me right away. He goes, hey, what is this? I'm like, Christian, before you get angry. He goes, no, my mom wants me. So we do have a lot of customers. Just throwing it out there. So if you do, I will, I will buy my own one for that one.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Mr. Ranger Report?
We had orientation on Saturday morning for some of our summer workers, campground workers. And the one reason I want to bring that up is we had, is it called Brancan again?
Narcan.
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 We had a presentation from some people from Carroll. And they talked to us about if we had somebody who overdosed. And so they showed us how to use that Narcan.
Yes.
So it was called fet- fet- fetanol. You can tell I'm a, don't do much of this kind of stuff. And if, if somebody isn't having that kind of overdose, it doesn't hurt him to use it. So we'll have some at the campground. We'll have available for people in case we need that. So that was, that was well received. Then, just as a last reminder, I talked, we had a team meeting this morning. And that sign out there, five miles, maybe there's a little different opinion, but I know that the council's voted to tear that down. And so we're going to try to save, we'll save the solar stuff, but the sign, we're just going to tip over and let her go. Unless I get any disagreement on that at this point in time. And we'll tip it towards the road then. There's nothing on the sign anymore. It's just a blaze sign. So unless, is that okay?
Is that too hard to pull the poles or just cut them off?
They're going to cut them first.
We'll cut them and then we can pull the poles. It'll be easier to take the metal portion of it down while it's on the ground. It will be safer for us, too.
I don't have anything else. The rest is agenda stuff.
Do you know when you're doing that?
Next week, they're hoping.
If the world goes right, hopefully next Monday.
You're not saying that because we'll work that, we're going to work that field this week, so.
So we shouldn't have to go into the field. We should be able to do it all from the ditch.
Okay. Otherwise, you could go in the field if they'd made it easier. If we haven't worked it, you're more than welcome to go in the field.
If everything goes correctly.
All I have is a donor meeting the other night. We had a hundred and eighty people there. I thought everybody enjoyed themselves. Yesterday, we had the open house, and it was busy all day. And I think we booked three events yesterday.
That's great.
Please allow. Okay, now we'll go to the historic preservation.
A couple of months ago, Sue Barney and I came to the council to ask for funding for stone piers. And we had also mentioned that we would try to get some grants to handle some of that money. Our last estimate on that last year, we had a thirteen thousand dollar estimate, which the city of Lakeview took care of. And this year, we have a ten thousand dollar estimate. We did apply for a grant that, if I just lost it, okay. Is with the Resource Enhancement Protection Historical Resource Development Grant Program.
Mouthful.
Mouthful. Anyway, Shannon Pot from Region Twelve came out and visited with our council and our commission. She took care of all the line for this grant and everything. She sent that in probably a couple of weeks ago now. I think we've got a pretty good chance of getting that. It's going to be about five thousand dollars. So during that meeting, we got talking and I said, you know, I know a little bit about the Lakeview Protective Association, Lakeview, Lake Protective Association. I said, well, I could talk to them, see what they'd be willing to put some money into that. And so I did. I talked to them and told them what the situation was. The reason I went to them is because a lot of people fish off of those docks, off of those piers. And I gave my presentation and the next morning, Wes Nile, the chairman, called me up. And he said that they are willing to cover the other five thousand dollars. We get the grant, they'll cover the other five thousand dollars. I said, oh, that's great.
Yeah, congratulations.
And if we don't get the grant, then, you know, he said, if you don't get the grant, we'll cover the whole thing. Okay. Anyway, so I said, well, you know, this might be an ongoing thing. I said, we can apply for this grant two years in a row. But that, after that, we can't apply for it anymore. And he said, well, maybe we can set up a committed fund for that, for ongoing here, the pier. So it looks like the LPA is going to handle that for us. I'm going to keep in touch with them and try to keep them up to date where we're at. I just wanted to bring that to you and let you know that it's not like we're going to need the money from you.
Good news, George.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
George, thank you.
Thanks for coming and sharing.
Thanks for all your work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chris Mason's trying to zoom in. He said, I don't know how you do it. I have no idea.
See you later.
Just sent back, said he was trying to get in.
How do I do it?
Who's good at running these?
George.
George? He's got it.
This is one of these doors, not this other one.
Very perfect.
They apparently watched the video. I disagree with what Piper Sandler said because they did a fresh study for two years.
I appreciate that.
So would have had some, except for doing all about it. You know what I mean?
Wes will find out.
This is one that we had earlier, but they didn't. It's just they, they watched the video. It's crazy. Right. I love, I love.
George is typing that in. George's been in communication with the school about getting some barriers. We've talked about parking last month. So I think they'll loan us some so we can try that going into the parking lot. That they, that building they tore down. So we can get more stalls on the street there. So we're, we're working on getting that solution. We haven't done anything with handicap parking yet.
Have we heard anything from Julia at the post office? Is it working better there?
She hasn't called.
Yeah, the school basically said that we could use some concrete barriers as long as they don't need them. And, I mean, so we'll have them blocking the sidewalk so we can put more diagonal park路 on the main street.
Third street.
Third street. If you guys think it's a good idea.
I think let's try it and see how it works.
Just for a temporary fix.
Jason, now how do I let him in?
You're going to be allowed in there.
We're coming in.
We don't have to do anything. It automatically comes.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're probably waiting to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to discuss.
I'll make it.
So the first item is just our discussion. Then we will move into the ordinances related to each one of those. This is a follow-up to our conversation a couple of weeks ago when Piper Sandler was here. And so, again, as a review, Piper Sandler recommended a fifteen percent increase in sewer. They recommend, they recommended water to go up fifty-five percent over the next three years. And they recommended a fourteen percent increase in electricity. Now, what Kay's handed out tonight, we got from DGR, an engineering firm that has been apparently working with you about the electrical rates. And DGR's recommendations would be different than Piper Sandler's. At a minimum, DGR believes electricity should go up seven percent. But they would even, if you could handle it, to go up fifteen percent. The question becomes, how do you establish rates for increases? As we talked a lot last time, we have many, many customers who don't use the utilities all year round. And so that base rate, do you adjust that base rate to make sure it has some impact on everybody? And so I know Kay has worked real hard, and she's created some spreadsheets for your review, and Kay can help define that. In addition, this afternoon, I've been trying to get Travis, he's the guy from Sandler. So he sent us a tool from the University of North Carolina. And the date on this tool is for May of 2023. So it's not 2025 data, it's two-year-old data. But it is interesting. So on this, it's a little, if you can look at it, so you can look at water bills, sewer bills, and then the combination of water sewer. And we've put in the two thousand gallons because for water, remembering what Kay told me, that's our minimum. So you have to use more than two thousand before you get that next set of fees. So if you look at this, you can see where Lakeview is on water. We are way on the low, low end. And what we're having you, there are six, six hundred and forty-five people that filled out this, cities that filled out this survey. So we can even get it down to cities within twenty-five miles of us. And you can see how low our water rates are compared to even people around us. Okay? Now, you can do the same thing. And so that's with the zero percent increase. So the water, let's say you went up twenty percent. Well, let's even just jump it to the fifty-five that they talked about over three years. You're still low. Now, sewer, if you went up fifty-five, you'd be way, way on the high end, you can see. But let's go back to the fifteen percent that he talked about. I'm trying to get it close. There we go. So we're, we're not way out of the range, but we're a little higher on the sewer rates compared to where, being way low on the water rates. Now, when you look at them both together, water sewer, and this is the fifteen percent. I'm going to put it back to the zero where we were, our current rates. You can see our water sewer combined rates tend to be relatively low compared to people around us. And I know you wanted to get some specific school. I, I mean, I could, there was like Rockwell City was a town that had, Lake City was a town that had, Bree was a town that's had. So those that are within, you can see the dots. Those are the ones that are compared, and we could look at those, too. I think the reality is, while nobody wants to increase rates, the fact is, you have to do something because we're, we're falling behind. And if you don't want to raise rates, then you're going to have to reduce costs somehow. And you, while the city may be different than a school, costs for a school or people, I would assume costs for the city are still likewise. You're going to have to cut expenses. And that generally means you cut benefits, you cut staff. And I don't think we're in a position where we want to cut staff personally. Going back again, and Kay and Jason can help fill it. I don't think we've raised electric rates in over ten years.
Correct.
And so it's been a long time since we've looked at that. You did raise water sewer here just recently.
Right.
Last July.
Yeah. Yes.
Yep. Well, that would show a fifteen dollar minimum at a thousand gallons. We're now at sixteen forty-six at two thousand gallons. But still, even at sixteen forty-six with our water on there, we would have been way below everybody else in our area.
You, you know, fifteen percent sounds high. And again, I'd like Kay to kind of go over her spreadsheet. When you're talking some of the dollar numbers, you're, you're talking three or four dollars on water. So I mean, we're talking fifteen percent means three or four dollars more per month. So thirty-some dollars, maybe forty dollars a year, depending on how you break the, the, the costs out based on the base compared to usage. So I don't know. Do you want to help explain some of this so we can all understand that, Kay?
So the top one is water. And if you look at where it says current, these are the current rates if you use only two thousand gallons or less. If you use three thousand gallons going down, and if you use fifty-two hundred. So those would be your current bill. If you move over to the right, if you added twenty percent to the base and five percent to the gallons, you'll notice the top one doesn't change as you go across because those people would never use more than the two thousand gallons. So any rate you put on gallons, they would never pay. And that's going to be a lot of your lake residents, and that's going to be a lot of your older folks who would still use, you know, under two thousand gallons. So if you go down then, you'll see what a twenty percent base and a five percent gallons does to somebody who would use an extra thousand over the two thousand, and somebody who would use thirty-two hundred over the two thousand. So moving across to the right then, you'll see a twenty percent base plus ten percent on gallons, and you're getting, and your figures as you go down. Last column, twenty percent base, twenty percent on gallons. And, and you can see there, the, the top one, if you never use more than two thousand gallons, that percentage on your, on your gallons, you're never going to see a return on that because, you know, folks just aren't using those gallons. As you go down then, though, you see what happens if you use an extra thousand or an extra thirty-two hundred over the base. And you can see what the price difference would be from a current bill, seventeen forty-five with, and this includes tax now, over to twenty ninety-four, if you did a twenty percent increase on the base and they didn't use more than two thousand gallons. Sewer columns run the same way. What your current would be if you had fifteen percent on the base plus five percent on the gallons, fifteen percent on the base, seven percent on the gallons, and fifteen and fifteen.
If we, did you, by chance, and I don't know if you had time to do that, but the twenty percent on base and ten percent on gallons, did you happen to know what that would do for our picture for our projects coming up?
I did not. I did not calculate what.
What, you know what I'm trying to get at?
Right, right. Because that would, yeah.
That, a little bit of that deal was in this piece, was where it kind of gives the recommendations of what these rates need to be in. They, these are actually higher than what they did here. You know, but to make it work, the minimum's on here to make it even work with no. But everything working perfect, which nothing works perfectly.
Well, Sandler mentioned five percent, then twenty-five percent, and the twenty-five percent for a total of fifty-five.
Where Jeff and I looked at it and said, you know, if we do twenty, twenty, and twenty, I mean, we need to start getting our, our water back in line now, not a year from now and another year from now.
So we, that's why we did twenty, twenty, and twenty across the board, which obviously can be changed.
Sure, yeah.
That was just how we were looking at it.
Judy has a question there.
I know the sewer is connected to the water. But I understood, and I am not opposed to these rates at all. I, I think we need to do them, but I think we need to do, a lot of explaining in the newspaper about it. But anyway, I, I was, I remember hearing at a council or something that the sewer costs were not covered, you know, for the future, that we were okay. So I, maybe it would help with the goodwill of the community if we did not raise the sewer rate, just told them we're just raising the water rate. You know, separate that percentage that we're going towards. You know, they automatically were both going at the same rate. They were connected. But not do the sewer rate.
Originally, they were, because we needed above average.
Yeah.
But now they're going to be two separate, there'll be two separate increases.
Yeah, yeah.
The twenty, the twenty, twenty, one.
The problem with that is because of our SRF loan.
Yep.
And we're behind on it. We don't have a choice.
Yeah.
We're not at the right percentage to pay back that loan.
Yep.
We're not on the sewer?
We're not.
So we're so low on our rates that everyone will continue to get so low interest.
We were told one time that we were covered for the sewer for the duration.
Well, so that could be a little misleading because the way we used to be in our profit loss statement, we had one person dedicated for our sewer, staff-wise, and we were robbing people from other departments. Or paying for other departments to cover that. So when we changed that so we could really see what our water sewer and electric was really doing, we changed that up basically on a P and L, which is the way I like to explain it. Now we're way below what we need to be for our SRF.
And I understand that completely. I think the only thing you need to do is explain it in detail in the paper so the public understands.
Yeah, we're just trying to make it so we can cover our actual cost, and each entity supports itself.
We're always going to still fight the inflation. We, we need to look at it a little more often than what we have in the past in order, to get a routine or that, you know. Nobody likes raising it. I understand that. But it's a cost to do a business. All our infrastructure is, is over. It's coming now to haunt us where we got to start covering it, to fix it up, to bring it up to, to where it should be. So I mean, like I said, it's, and you're absolutely right about telling the public what to do this. But, you know, you look at this, five bucks is pretty, not bad for.
I think, and I think we need to tell people our ancestors put in infrastructure. Now, all over the United States, this generation is having to do it because our ancestors did it a hundred years ago, and it's worn out. We're not the only community. We just, I mean, we really need to stress that to our community.
I, I, when I came into this, I toured all the different plans and stuff. And what's tough about that is it's, it's a forty-year plan, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Because we're not just.
Can't do it all right now.
Yeah. So that's why we got to build it and figure out how, how, how to cover it and stuff.
And there's a lot of conversations right now in legislature that are going to limit communities to how high they can raise. You know, they're going to limit us on our things. So if we don't get us to a, if we don't get us to a, at least a standard rate where we're not way behind.
I understand. I understand it completely.
So all those things need to be, they need to be addressed in, in conversations. And again, two weeks from now, we're sitting here again. If people have, have a question about it, we can.
I think, I think there needs to be some articles like they did with the jail. You know, explain in detail why, why this needs to be done. You're always going to have some people that are complaining and going right. But rational, there are rational people in the community that are going to understand this.
None of those rational people have ever called me.
So, so Kay's given the information about the water and the sewer, then I think she has some similar data with electrical rate. Now, again, we only.
Let's just stay on the water.
Okay, let's, okay.
So I'm looking at the twenty and twenty-one right now, where the bill would be forty dollars and seven cents. Is that correct?
Yes, they use fifty-two hundred gallons of water.
Okay. My last month's bill, I have a copy of it here, was sixty-three hundred gallons of water. And my bill was thirty-six, sixty-seven as well. I mean, so it's really, dollar-wise, it's not much of any.
No, it, yeah, it's going to, if we, if we bump to the max on both of these, the, the top end is going to be ten dollars if you put both of them in. I mean, it's, it's really not a, this one isn't a large, large amount of money that we're dealing with for the first.
Correct. So my question is, and I don't have this in front of me, do we need to go to the base? Does it need to go to twenty-five percent increase? And then twenty or fifteen?
You could do a.
See what I'm getting at?
Yeah, because that base.
Twenty-five percent base.
The, the base, you know, we.
And then maybe fifteen percent on the gallons.
We talk about it all the time. The, the base is what's going to affect the people that are, that can serve and don't use a lot of it. But also, that's going to affect the people that aren't here for seven months out of the year. And those are the people we kind of want to make sure are paying their share also, you know.
I think if you do it once, if you start spreading, you do increases the next three years, people are going to be able, unless you just bite the bullet and do it now.
Well, I, I'm looking at, you know, the base is sixteen forty-six. And if you do twenty percent, it's nineteen seventy-five, it's three dollars a month.
Yeah, that's, that's not very much. We did twenty-five on the base.
Right, that's what I'm doing.
And twenty on the, on the gallons.
Or fifteen on the gallons or what, you know, to offset it one way or the other.
Well, we got to weld the date, so I mean.
Right.
Yeah, that's it. So.
That's, that should determine when we should start doing it. Whether naturally or bite the bullet.
But it, it, if you really think, when you look at a bill and you talk about percentages, it scares you. But when you're looking at dollars like three dollars, it's like.
Right, right.
That, that'd shock me when I looked at that.
How much smaller, you know, because it's just not a lot.
That's because we're so low.
Right, right.
I think Judy's right though, if you put a couple of those figures in the paper so people can understand that. Because they're just going to hear bill raised and they're going to freak, you know. Maybe put some of the lines that Kay did in the paper. Show people like, I don't know if there's a way you can kind of fake a bill type thing, you know.
That's six cans of pot at City Hall.
Yeah.
Well.
If you're you.
Well, he said he did that.
I'd, I'd be definitely open on more on the base just because that's a small amount, but it's going to, it'll affect a bigger group a little bit.
Yeah.
Just a very little bit, but that'll, that'll.
Where like what she said, the gallons, that affects.
It's going to affect a bigger amount.
Yeah.
So would you, I mean, we could do a twenty-five percent base or you could say, well, how about an even twenty bucks or an even twenty, twenty-five? Or an even, I mean, it doesn't have to be a percentage.
Right.
You know, you know, nineteen seventy-five is, is twenty percent. If, if you'd rather do.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-fifty-eight is what I show as twenty-five percent.
So twenty-one.
So twenty-one, twenty-one, fifty cents, I mean, just.
And then twenty percent.
It makes it a little bit easier in, in calculating and whatnot when you're doing, you know, numbers like that for the base, but I mean.
And the percentages scare people, not the dollar.
Right, that's right.
So the dollar might be smarter to say.
Right.
Personally, I think it would be better.
Yeah, we're going to do like five dollars.
Are we going to flat?
Yeah, go put your base at twenty-one and then put your gallons at, which you could drop to fifteen percent if you didn't want to do twenty percent.
We just got to make sure that we're not operating in the negative and that we have enough in case emergencies arise.
Right.
Because right now, we just don't.
Right, right, and again, that's why you're doing a three-year increase because.
So on, do we know how, if we do the, like the twenty-five on the base like we talked about and a twenty on the gallons, do we know, do we know what revenue that changes that brings us into?
I don't, I did not have time that day to figure out how many customers would, the base times how many customers. Now, you could say nine hundred and thirty-some.
To get us in compliance with our SRF flow.
Right, yeah, I'd have to look at, um.
So what?
Driver Sandler's paperwork.
How's this sell better if we just go twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five for three years?
Three years.
That way everybody knows what it's going to be for the next three years.
And then, and then what about the cost of living after that?
And just the three or, we have just the three percent or whatever. I mean, we re, we kind of got to reestablish it in three years and see where.
The legislative, you may be limited to two percent, that's what happens with the legislative.
So if, if we screw around on a low one now and then next year they decide we can only do two percent, we're never going to get to the point where we can fix the water problem in town.
Right.
It's going to just, yeah, it's going to drag us down completely. I don't know, that's my opinion.
I think, yeah. Our water rate is so low that.
Well, again, if you put in the fifty-five percent up here, still low. Just on, if we just look at water again. And he's recommending fifty-five percent over three years, right?
Yep.
That's fifty-six, but it's close. You're still low.
So go to seventy-five percent, because that'd be twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. You're getting close to the median, but you're still on the low side of the median.
You got to figure that most of these cities have raised their rates since then.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, this is, this is two-year-old data too, so they may already be higher than what this is showing.
Fifty percent on the base is eight dollars a month.
I do fifty.
See, if we raise our base fifty percent, it's eight dollars and twenty-three cents a month.
It's really.
It's a lifestyle. Sorry, but.
Well, and it's not even a lifestyle to live here. When we're still in the bottom twenty-five percentile of, of what it is to live in Earth.
You'll bring a lot of people in in the summer, they're not just residents and they need water.
And again, I'm going to go back to making sure we're able to pay for things that break because they're going to break with the age of our infrastructure the way they are.
And right now, we're barely paying just to keep it, let alone.
Because the minute somebody doesn't have water because we couldn't afford to keep up with the maintenance and then.
Then that eight bucks doesn't look so bad.
Then that eight bucks doesn't look so bad at all.
So Dale, what you thinking, like fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five or what's your?
I, I'm big on the base. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to a number on the base as much as I am to a higher number on the gallonage, to be honest with you.
Because if anybody's complaining about the gallon usage, they can, they can scale back on what they're using.
Yeah.
And so that, you know, that doesn't help though.
I've said this all along, we have, we provide the services for our part-timers, I guess you'd say, and we try and provide great services for them where I don't want to punish our full-time old residents. I want them to pay their fair share but not punish them. So I, 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 in my opinion, I, I'd do a fifty percent on the base and maybe ten or fifteen on the gallonage. And then again, bump something next.
So what about second year, third year? Fifty percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent on, on water? What would that put us at in a hundred just on water? That would still be below the, we'd still be below.
Hundred percent over, just.
We're still technically below the, below the, maybe we're below level, but we're, we're getting closer.
Yes.
So what, what numbers did you toss up?
Fifty this year, twenty-five next year, twenty-five the following year. So a hundred percent on the basis in the next three years.
Three years.
On the base.
On the base.
And is that going to cover our expenses?
Well, they were talking originally twenty-five, they, they wanted us up fifty percent.
They wanted five, twenty, twenty.
Yeah, they wanted, so they wanted us fifty percent.
To get us to a hundred and ten percent of what the SRF would be.
And that would cover the SRF and start putting some money in the black again so that when we have, you know, the emergency, like shore sand and things like that, then we've got something that we can go work with. Let, and that doesn't even consider the three main projects, I mean, you know, that, that we've got. We've got to figure out a way to start making it easier to pay those things back.
Because again, we're looking at being limited.
Uh-huh.
Possibly, it might get hung up here in a year, we don't even know.
So what you need to do is, so the water is actually item eight. So when you get to that point, you're going to have to have a recommendation, correct, that we're putting in for the ordinance for our first reading. And so up here on item six, we're discussing these.
Yep.
Seventy, nine is where we're going to put in our recommendations for our first reading.
Yep.
And because this is, I know you can do less readings, but I would say for something like this, you'll probably want to do all three readings.
I, I agree.
So if you're looking at fifty percent on the base, what would you be looking at on the gallons? Right now, it's four dollars and seventy cents per thousand.
How much?
Four dollars and seventy cents per thousand.
So six thousand is twenty-four dollars approximately.
I mean, it'll be a little more because obviously you get seventy cents in there for.
What'd you say it is per thousand?
Four dollars and seventy cents per thousand, so point zero, zero four seven.
So be.
Times your six thousand.
Four dollars and seventy cents.
Because the first two thousand is free.
Right, and, and like, like.
So it's.
It's only for, on four thousand gallons because the first two thousand are free.
Right, so it's four dollars and seventy cents per thousand.
Yep, so take four thousand gallons times point zero zero four seven zero.
That's eighteen dollars and eighty cent, that's eighteen dollars and eighty cents for that extra four thousand gallons.
I'm calculating, working what I want to.
Twenty percent would go out the other line.
Well, and I'll just chime in on this. The EPA is changing stuff on us left and right. There's new regulations that are coming down that we're not currently aware of, but are being told that they're coming. The PFOS is a big thing that is already being pushed. I mean, just the one PFOS test, they've changed it because more people are doing it now, but it's about a hundred and seventy-five bucks and if we have to start doing that every quarter, well, you're pretty much looking at two hundred bucks every quarter and that's just the one test. You know, and.
They're not making it easier and cheaper.
Oh, heck no. And they're talking about revising the lead and copper rules and if they change the lead and copper rules and make us go back to the old statute of it where you have to test, uh, well, for us, it would be twenty houses and we'd have to do it four times a year. Each lead and copper test is approximately about forty-five bucks. Now we're going to do twenty of them four times a year. They, that's been in discussions and there's other rules that, from what I've been told are coming that we don't know. They'll hit us like they did with the manganese stuff and just go, here you go, deal with it.
Yeah, figure out how to pay for it.
If we do a fifty percent on the base, year one and ten on the year two and year three, does that get us somewhere, it gets us past what they're asking for?
That's, this is, up here is going to be twenty-five, twenty-five and if you look at that top right, we're still, we're still below the.
So fifty, twenty, twenty then?
Fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five is what I would say.
That's what I was.
Well, so but you got to remember, you got to remember that when you start doing fifty percent increase, twenty percent is on a bigger dollar.
Yeah, 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 now that's true too, yeah.
That's why I come up with those numbers, doing the math.
And I like your thinking long-term because we need to do that. But for this, I'm thinking, you're thinking the ordinance for this year unless you, are you going to put in the ordinance a three-year plan already or just the fifty percent?
I think if we don't do it, if we don't do it, it'll get overlooked and we need to put on it for us.
I, I think that you can put in the ordinance, can you do it so we review it in a year at the twenty-five to make sure?
Yeah, I just have to rewrite the, I mean, obviously the ordinance is not written to do that because that wasn't.
Right.
You know, the intent, yeah, we just need to, I mean, we can do the reading, but we also need to amend the ordinance to.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, y- you don't need it in the ordinance that you're going to look at it in a year. If you're going to do automatic increases, that has to be.
We'll, we'll look at it because we know it's coming to make sure that that's where we need to be.
Right.
Plus or minus where we need to be. So if we go fifty, twenty, twenty on the base, what do you, what do you think we need to do?
I was thinking twenty, twenty, a whole, yep, yep.
Chris, you're looking at fifty percent on the base this year and then twenty next year and twenty after.
That's, that's just the numbers I wrote down.
Okay, and then the gallons.
And then twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent.
Okay.
And then reviewing it after a year?
Yeah, well, next year when this comes up that we're raising them twenty percent and twenty percent, like we've got, you know, in, in the thing, then we can decide. We can see a year where we are, where we're at.
We made progress.
Yeah, we made progress or not, or what the, uh, what the, uh, what the legislature says that we might not have an option.
Well, that's just it, that's why I'm, I'm a little.
Yeah.
More aggressive at this point in time than.
Yeah, the fifty and the twenty are aggressive right out of the box and then we can always up that if we need to next year, we can, we can make that, we can make that recommendation and talk about it again next year.
What if the legislature won't let us?
Hopefully we've got more than a year for that.
And just to be clear, that bill that is trying to get pushed through is only on wastewater currently. It's only on wastewater that they're trying to limit us to only go two percent. It's not on the water side yet, nobody's submitted a bill for that aspect.
So if th- these numbers on the water side were good and now as we converse about the sewer side, maybe that's what we need to be more aggressive on because of the possibility of getting.
So from talking to the DNR and everything, I, nobody believes that this is going to pass. Doesn't mean that it's not going to. But as you guys know, when you take out your SR, SRF loan, they tell you, you have to be here. Well, how do you say you can only raise it two percent, but then SRF says you got to go up thirty-eight? Um, that's the hiccup that, um, from what I heard from the DNR is getting fought um, to where they don't believe it'll go through this year. Doesn't, like I said, it's still a crapshoot, um.
I'd assume every council in the state right now is thinking we got to raise our stuff now because we're going to be out pretty soon.
Correct.
And I could be wrong, but I thought I heard if you wanted to go more than that, then you'd have to bring it to the public for a vote. So I think there would be an option, but you'd have to have people say, yes, we're going to vote yes to raise our rates higher than that.
Okay.
So do you have numbers that everybody's kind of comfortable at least thinking about for water?
For water alone especially because that's the one that's up now, let's figure out sewer.
Fifty, twenty, twenty?
Fifty, fifty, twenty, twenty and on the base and twenty, twenty, twenty on the, on the gallons.
And that, them, them rates are going to get us closer to what our sewer costs.
Yes, yeah.
Correctly.
And so sewer, we want to run into what we think on sewer then?
I don't think we need to, well, see, I'm just, I don't think we need to be as aggressive.
No, very, very less aggressive than sewer.
Even though that's what the legislative is talking about, I just think we could be less aggressive with sewer. That's just my opinion.
Originally, and I don't know if you and I were talking about this, but I, I had written down fifteen, five for sewer.
So the fifteen was what Travis told us we had to do in order to meet the SRF requirement. Um, okay.
So.
I, I will just put it out there, there is nothing out at that wastewater treatment plant that is cheap. And especially with the tariffs that are now going to be in effect here in what, another month or two, whatever. You got to remember that whole system, everything I have to get for it has to come from Canada. And originally, they were excluded from the tariffs, but we got an email last week that says they are no longer excluded.
That's true, it's excluded.
So, you know, take that into consideration, you know, the diffusers, the blowers, the UV lights, the, um, ballast, all that stuff has to come from Nexum, which is out of Canada.
So if you did a fifteen percent on the sewer, you're going to be a little higher than the median for the cities and provinces.
We're paying for a new sewer right now, then we also got, remember, we got a staff that's going to cost us more money, you know, for raises and stuff, I mean, that's all.
What if we, what if we did a twenty percent on the base on the sewer and nothing on the gallonage? That would get us within our SRF.
And that, would that get us?
Right.
Fifteen is what they say on the SRF.
And that keeps us.
Is that an across, yeah, how does that work though, is that across the board though? Is it like the, the whole bill?
Well, that's why they said fifteen, that's why I said we went twenty on the base.
Yeah.
Which, which is a dollar fifty-seven a month.
Yes, yes, no.
I know it, or, or we raise the base two dollars a month.
Yeah, that's, that sounds more palatable, I think, to somebody than saying we're going to go up fifteen or twenty. It's two dollars more a month on sewer.
Right.
Base.
Base.
On the base, yes. That's only two cans of pot.
Or make it.
Just to make it ea- make it easy for Kay, just make it to thirty-three, thirty-three fifty.
On the base.
Yeah, but if you increase your base right now by fifteen percent.
This is, this would be a little bit over twenty.
You're going to thirty-six, thirty-one, right?
And I'm talking.
Right, you said two dollars, so you're not.
The base is thirty-one, fifty-seven.
Right, right, but fifteen percent increase on the base goes to thirty-six, thirty-one.
Yeah, ten percent would be three dollars and fifteen cents.
Not two dollars.
No, 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 no.
Not according to your figures here.
Fifteen percent base, five percent gallons, it goes from thirty-one, fifty-seven.
Thirty-six, thirty-one.
To thirty-six, thirty-one.
What am I looking at wrong? Hold on.
Here's the base.
Yeah, what's this number?
And then thirty-one, fifty-seven, it goes to thirty-six, thirty-one.
Oh, what are these numbers down here?
This is, this is a fifteen percent base.
At least this number, this is not accurate.
That's the regular, that's the regular.
So this is what I was looking at?
Yeah, this number here is incorrect.
Okay, so I apologize, I was working.
No, you're right, you're right, yeah, because I was looking at up here, fifteen percent on base changes to this, fifty percent on base changes to that, yeah.
Just take your calculator and take thirty-one fifty-seven to fifty percent.
That would be three dollars, about four fifty, roughly.
Yeah.
You got thirty-six thirty-one.
Thirty-six thirty-one, yeah.
Yep.
Cross off them lines.
So what I, what do we wanna do for sewer, working at?
So fifteen percent would be.
Four fifty, roughly.
Four seventy-four.
So that's what I was looking at, then if you did fifty percent on the base, you know, the total is six oh eight, so in order to raise.
Yeah.
Yeah, your base dollars, you have to go like six bucks, basically to cover.
If you don't do anything on the.
On the gallons, you'd have to raise your base six dollars.
Yep. And leave the base gallons alone.
Leave the base gallons alone.
Not for that.
Okay, so I think you got agreement on sewer and water, now you're up to electricity.
So then, just FYI before we get started, our minimum electric rate is, per rule. Make sure I'm at the right column, Kay.
I know, sorry.
Is nineteen dollars, correct?
For rule, yes.
REC, rule, today.
People like us, they want us instead of REC.
Yeah, their, their base depending on the size of transformer is between forty-eight and fifty.
Really?
So I know the one Ben said that my son-in-law has. Lake views, there's no sense even not keeping it in case we need a battery charger or something because it's cheap.
It's cheap.
Where you get to the other ones, it starts to make a difference. We are definitely cheap on rule.
And I think, again, Kay can explain it far better than I, but on the electric, you get into, um. You've got difference between residents, people in the country pay higher, you're industrial, they have this demand.
Yes.
Rate, and so how you wanna split that. And I think the examples that she gave you on the electrical were for two highest users.
Two of our, for the industrial ones.
Industrial, yeah.
Our, for two actual customer bills for our industrial users that have a demand meter. A three-phase, three-phase demand meter.
So is this the, is this the one on the bottom?
Bottom of page is three.
Yeah. Whereas industrial electric.
Yeah, so this is one of the.
So these folks pay, right, they pay eleven dollars and twenty-five cents per demand kilowatt. So this is your demand kilowatt, you pay eleven twenty-five times that, right? Their overall kilowatts are less expensive.
Right.
But because they need that peak demand three phase, that's what. This would be ten percent, ten percent, and I did ten percent on the kilowatts and on the demand meter.
Right.
So you wouldn't have to do that. But these, these folks, if they don't, they pay on a fifty percent demand ratchet, which means. If they don't beat their fifty percent demand of the previous month, it, it's on a twelve-year, twelve-month schedule.
Is this their average?
They get billed the highest fifty percent of their peak demand.
Is this number an average number or?
I think it was a month, just their last month, I believe.
Yeah, this was, this was one month, this was one month. Of actual bills.
So on that top industrial user. If you do the ten and ten, their monthly bill would go. Three, approximately three, less than three hundred.
But there again, you could increase the base, say to forty instead of thirty, and maybe not increase the demand kilowatts. But increase their four dollar and, or their four fifty cents.
Well, our.
Four and a half cents per kilowatt.
Our costs on the kilowatts have increased. Every year that I've been on the council, the last three years, and we haven't changed their rates.
Right, I mean, they, they were changed when everybody else's rates were changed. And, and when the rates were done at that time, it was the cost to serve rural customers because of the overhead line and the maintenance and that kinda stuff. Um, same with, with the industrial, the cost of a three-phase transformer, what was fifty thousand now?
That depends on what size we go with, if you go with a five hundred, like what was ordered for the locker, we're looking at about forty-eight grand. If you look at the three hundred for the Casey's or the community center, we're looking at just shy of forty. And fifty-six weeks to get.
Actually get one.
We should go through each of these individually, I think.
What's a, what's a cost if they would do some add-on out there, you know? Do, would we have, what equipment would we need to use for that?
If we're talking like Evapco.
Yeah.
Um.
Curious.
It depends on how big they go, to be honest, I mean, if they go astronomically large. And we have to find another like seven fifty KW three-phase. I'm guessing we haven't had to look at the price of one of those, but we're probably pushing seventy grand. Um, just in the transformer, not including the price of wire, four-out wire right now is averaging about four and a quarter a foot. So depending on where we have to tie, you know, we might go five hundred feet. At four hundred, or four dollars and twenty-five cents a linear foot, um. You know, it. Depending on how big they go, we might be into it for another hundred to two hundred thousand. And that's just rough estimates, don't, don't hold any of those numbers to hundred percent fact.
What about old castle, what, what, would they?
If they upgrade and do something, we're probably right around the fifty to a hundred grand, depending on how large they go also, I mean.
Do you remember when we hired DGR, part of that was if Evapco went too large, our substation.
Right.
Was gonna need those upgrades, and that's why that, we were doing that DGR rate study.
And D, what does DGR say that we need to do?
A minimum of fifteen.
Fifteen is what they'd like to see.
And their rate schedule, if you look at, depends on which project you would do, they have their projects on the front sheet.
Right.
And their rates then are broken down, their percentage increases broken down based on what project you would do. So we have fifteen percent, fifteen percent, three percent. We have twenty percent, twenty percent. And the last page, depending on the project you did. Fifteen percent, fifteen percent, four percent, three percent. So their minimum is fifteen percent, just because if, if Evapco gets too big or we have too many businesses come online.
Yeah, we don't always.
We are gonna need to.
There's a lot, I mean, that one's.
Upgrade our substation.
Some stuff in that, that.
We have a lot of stuff coming.
When, you know, Casey shows up and, and immediately something else is looking at the next thing, and something else is looking at the next thing, so. I, I don't see us going backwards on growth right now, so what we're doing in town, and we don't wanna do that, so we need to make sure we get juice for the people who wanna come here.
That, everything just keeps going up on the elec, well, it's on water, wastewater and electric, um, they're all going up, they're not going back down. I mean, COVID kind of, uh, kicked us.
I think we need to plan for the future.
I mean, like I, and I've told Jeff, like our bucket truck is twenty-six years old, and it's supposed to be on a twenty-five year replacement. Three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars was quote from two weeks ago for a new bucket truck.
And that's five years old.
And it takes five years to build it.
Do we have a lot of residential users using over two thousand kilowatts?
Anybody with electric heat is gonna hit that number and double in the winter.
I have my electric bill from my acreage and I used twenty-eight hundred kilowatts last month. And I'm all electric, and I have a brand-new furnace, brand-new air conditioner, brand-new windows and siding, all within the last two years.
Then you use twenty-eight hundred.
I use twenty-eight hundred.
Well, I know our base needs to go up. Yeah, on, on all categories, especially rural electric.
So is that number the twenty percent that DGR is recommending if we do all the projects?
At least. At least. I mean, we are so low compared to the other providers around us.
What would fifty do, if you did fifty water, fifty electric, just to keep it?
It wouldn't change our base.
It wouldn't change the base. Yeah.
You could double the base.
Yeah, that's nothing.
I'm serious, but.
Keep in, keep in mind though, when you're talking, you know, raising water fifty percent, raising sewer fifteen percent and raising electric, doubling the base. You know, individually, it's not so bad when you look at a year's worth, but.
Yeah, that, that six thousand, like, she had an eight and a fourteen to it, you know, I'm saying, you know.
Yeah, just, just keep that in mind in your thinking.
Completely necessary, or, or we can't, I mean, we're, we're gonna be in, we're gonna be in the hole here before.
No, I get it, I get it, I just wanted to, you know, when you're talking individually, it's.
On the base, because that doesn't affect.
Yeah, as much.
You, especially if they're not hitting the minimum.
And now on electric, there is no minimum, you pay for every kilowatt.
The first hundred's a different rate than the second or third thousand.
First thousand. And for rural, it's the first two thousand, and if you go over two thousand is a different rate. For a residential, it's a thousand.
Well, my opinion, the rural base definitely needs to change compared to what are, are. Other rural people are providing in the area.
You got a number, which one's that good?
Thirty-five?
So what's that, seventy-five percent?
I'm just thinking for nineteen dollars, it's pretty hard for our, for us to pay for a crew to drive out there and read the meter. You know, we have, and them cost have went up over the last ten years. That's, I know it's a jump, but I guess it's a jump.
Yeah, yeah.
Where are we at?
Nineteen.
So now just, I'll show you guys, this is my electric bill from my house last month, my minimum access fee is thirty-seven fifty.
So, there you go.
You're in the ballpark, which, which company is that with?
REC.
REC.
So that gets us, that gets us pretty right in there.
So you have thirty as the base for rural?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five is the base for rural? With no kilowatt change or?
Well.
We're not there yet.
Not there yet.
Okay.
How many rural electric customers do we have approximately?
Meters.
Meters.
I'd have to go pull the.
Hundred?
The report, oh yeah, we got, what, ninety miles of rural line?
Ninety square miles of rural line when you do the actual square miles of it.
Considering we got almost early boat.
We're almost early.
Almost early.
Okay, we're probably hundred to two hundred would be a good roundabout number.
All right, make sure I read this correctly, five percent on a kilowatt. So Kay, come here a second, please, make sure I'm reading this.
Cause I didn't, I didn't put the individual kilowatts, I just put what the.
Okay, so if I read this correctly.
The kilowatts are nine point five cents for the first two thousand and five point seven cents for anything over two thousand.
Right, so here, this would be the current.
If they use seven hundred and thirty-six kilowatts.
Right.
Right, if they use, same way across the board, if this were seven percent on kilowatts, this were five percent.
This is two thousand kilowatts.
Right, and this is if they use over two thousand, say they used another thousand, they use thirty thousand total, because your rate changes.
Right.
Once you go over that two thousand, you drop down to five point seven cents.
Twenty-eight hundred, no more quarters, average number, I mean, two kilowatt.
So is the ten percent out of line on that or?
Well, I don't think, I, I, you know, you look at the difference between the five percent and ten percent as. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's not much.
And we're talking the rule.
Just rural right now.
Right, right, because their kilowatts are just a touch higher, one point five cent higher than residential.
I'd be, I'd be all in favor of a thirty-five dollar base for the rule and a ten percent of the.
On both, both rates, right?
Both rates, yeah.
Right.
First and over, yep. I'm just throwing that number out there. We have more expense on our rural electric. And maintaining it than we do in, in town. Would everybody agree with that statement?
Not huge numbers individually, but they have.
My calculator.
Correct.
Go out.
I saw everyone would be on, on residential then, I mean, the fifteen was a minimum, wasn't it? That fifteen to get us to where we needed to be, was there any? Is there something else? According to DGR's information.
What did they say? So we're doing residential now?
He says we'll hit all of them, just go right down the line.
You just wanna do a ten and ten on residential?
The DGR says we gotta be fifteen minimum just to get to where we need to be on the first, one of the first projects.
So are you looking at like increasing the base just a set dollar amount and then doing?
Well, yeah, I will see, if I do a ten percent, it's about fifty. And.
Saxity.
Which actually will end up being. Fifteen percent.
So it'd be seventeen twenty-five?
It'd be sixteen fifty.
That's ten, that's ten percent.
Oh yeah, sorry.
We want a fifteen percent, it'd be seventeen twenty-five.
And that's where DGR said.
That's where DGR said we need to be, just to be at the minimum.
And that's just for the base.
For electric, it's fifteen and fifteen out of line, gets us where DGR demands it is, like they're saying they need to be.
Doesn't bother me, I mean.
I think if that's what DGR suggests.
We get all said and done.
So we cover the.
When we, when we write where we think we wanna be, then we'll do like what somebody said, let's take what it's gonna take. I'm sorry, Judy, I'm gonna use you as an example, what it's gonna cost Judy Kramer per month on her utility bill in town. And then we can revisit it in most ourselves again, does that make sense?
Yep. So what I'm hearing, basically your residential base is about half of the rural, of the country base, and is what you're gonna end up being at.
Well, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I firmly believe that our rule is way too cheap.
That's what I'm saying, so I mean, if you're gonna be thirty-five, I don't know why you wouldn't say like seventeen fifty, you could just say our residential's half the rate.
Very good for it. I liked it for it.
I just had somebody tell me last week, and I can't remember who, but they were said, we would love to be on their rural, we would love to be on Lakeview Electric, but we can't. It doesn't come quite far enough to our house, you know, so.
That's good.
They recognize that it's cheap.
Know it's cheaper, so. So we do a fif, a seventeen fifty base on that, so we're ha, we're half of rural, and then fifteen percent on the, on the wattage?
On the kilowatts?
On the kilowatts.
So ten percent on rural kilowatts, fifteen percent on residential?
Yeah.
That's kinda backwards, isn't it?
Well, I'm just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
But you did jump the rural base quite a bit, so.
Yeah, but not really.
Okay, not compared to other.
Correct.
Right, do you know what your per kilowatt charge is?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Is it, is it a dollar or something?
Uh-uh, I'm below.
So.
We might be.
Ten, ten cents?
Just shot.
Kilowatt.
Okay, ten cents.
I think that should be subject to, after.
Because ours is nine point five cents.
All of this myself.
Then you add a ten percent to it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But I'm talking, why, like, like she did, Kay just pointed out, why would we go up fifteen percent with a kilowatt in town when we don't do that out of town, because it's out of town costs us more anyway, even though their base is.
There's my kilowatt charge, nine cents, just nine and a half cents.
Yeah, yeah, well.
That base, you get seven hundred and fifty kilowatts no matter what at fourteen cents.
Oh, okay, okay, oh, at fourteen cents?
And then anything over thirty-two.
Okay.
Or at nine and a half.
Okay, where are, are, are all kilowatts of the first two thousand are at nine and a half?
This is only me?
At fifteen.
I would be fifteen on rural and ten on town, if we're gonna do a ten, and if we're not, do fifteen and fifteen.
I'd, I'd say it'd be fifteen fifteen.
Electric rates haven't went up in this town for ten plus years.
So fifteen percent.
Our costs have went up, our expenses have went up.
Yep, so it's less than a percent a year if you go.
Yeah.
We're getting into replacement costs too.
Right, and we've got some major lines in town to replace.
And new businesses coming again.
That's what we asked for.
We gotta make these things.
Yes.
Well, just out of curiosity, just cause we, for a number, how much did silk cost us to put up? Just a rough, I mean, then at.
You throw labor and transformer and.
That's what all that, this is.
Inter duct and everything into it.
Equipment expense?
Equipment, we're easily seventy-five or above.
Yeah, so seventy, say roughly seventy-five thousand dollars to bring them to town, uh, roughly the, the redemption center, just, I mean, again, that was my.
That wasn't quite as bad.
That one wasn't bad, because the transformer was already there.
Okay.
But you look at Casey's, the amount of wire, we're gonna have to run, the transformer, the labor, um, we still don't know what we're gonna have to do with that overhead that's right there. Um, if we're gonna have to do something with that because of their entry lanes, um, we're probably just in labor and parts, we're gonna be into for close to about a hundred, easily.
Now, if we have to move them overheads, that would be at their expense.
But to get it to where we gotta get it, and the transformer and the amount of wire and inter duct.
They're still gonna be close to a hundred in, in itself, yeah.
So we're gonna do fifteen fifty, I'm comfortable with that, fifteen fifty.
That gets us in D G R's range, and we're bumping the bases up a little bit, so that, that, that overcompensates, so we're, overall, it'll be a little higher than fifteen now.
Now, are you allowed to be industrial, is that what you're left with?
Commercial.
Commercial and industrial.
Oh, there's two of them.
Yeah, commercial and industrial.
Commercial and industrial.
Well, commercial, their base is similar to the.
Rural.
Rural, so I mean, we've just, I, we probably do the same thing we did with rural with commercial. Is there very comparable in dollars on, on their basis?
Are these examples of certain commercial businesses?
No.
These are just.
Yeah, I did not pick commercial businesses and drop in exact numbers like I did on the other ones, I just knew there was concern on the other ones, that's why I picked actual customers.
So a thirty-five base on that and fifteen percent on the wattage? Same as we've done with rural?
Do we know approximately percentage wise on our total electric kilowatts sold, how much is commercial, industrial, and how much is residential?
I could tell you, but I can't tell you off the top of my head.
How long would it take you to get that info?
If I can find it in Tammy's paperwork.
I think it's important information.
It is, yeah.
Isn't there a difference between commercial and country, because the country are not really residents of Lakeview?
Yeah, the rates are different, yes, uh, well, and the, the U C, the, per kilowatt is higher also.
And the, and the, and you're not experiencing expense that you have to go out with the rural, like to take care of those overhead lines and to read those meters, you know, so.
The day-to-day expense, but the upfront expense of, of the business is considered.
I just wondered if that's fair to make that as much as rural.
Commercial and industrial, the city residential.
It's still so low, is the thing here.
So here's your number of meters, here is your actual kilowatts bill.
Mine in real is forty-two.
Industrial?
It's nineteen.
City?
Oh, wow, okay.
So where's my base?
That's, that's good to know.
So I'm double the base.
People know that. The business people know that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and so.
That's what I'm saying, that's for people.
And we're looking at it different ways also, like mine is this, so Vapco's is, not Vapco, because they're, they're different, but just size of business, it's okay, across the street from me, Victorian two, her minimum is forty-two, because she is a.
Same, and of course, industrial has the.
With two employees and what she does, so again, you look at the generated, the generated dollars of what the business does, the electrical rate doesn't care.
Commercial is not a thirty-dollar.
I see that totally now, but again.
Yeah, yeah, it's so.
This is people in town that know, but those kind of rules are on the other side.
Exactly, yeah, it's, it's inexpensive to be.
So you get two hundred and thirty electric customers when you were asking me about electric customers.
Well, Judy's right, how do we write this article up, Dale's gonna help us a lot. We'll give you two free sodas.
Open wallet.
Almost.
Don't eat rocks thrown at me, please.
If that helps, Shanny.
Yeah.
Did you, what did, what did you find here in here?
Well, so I, just a minute, I'll tell you, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry I'm commenting so much, I only came to hear about the housing later.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's fine, Judy, um, so residential and rural, I combined them together, kilowatts is nine hundred and five thousand a month, okay, remember nine hundred and five. Commercial, industrial, I combined them, is five sixty-two. So going back to our percentages.
They're forty-five percent of.
Well, they're, no, they're fifty-five percent. And there's some other. Whatever Pub twenty-two is.
Public authority, that's the city. The one with security lights, the one with all of our electricity for lagoon, water plant, wells, city.
The other thing that we need to consider in these rates is meter turn-on and turn-off fees. Is that in this ordinance?
Well, like, so water, last year, we did raise the turn-on and turn-off fees, right, and the electric has already been in there.
Okay.
If we just connect somebody, because I'm never turn back on, it's fifty dollars.
Okay. So, if I'm thinking through this correctly. To follow D G Rs, we almost have to do across the board. And if we're following through our thought process with industrial and the base fees, they almost have to follow the rule. For commercial and industrial. And my thought process with that is, is the expense for them upfront, yes, we get more audible for usage. Am I, am I speaking after I, do you follow what I'm saying?
Right, so you're thinking base on industrial, go from thirty to fifty-five, because that's not quite double.
No, thirty to thirty-five, it's.
You want them all equal.
Yeah, I would say.
You want them all equal, not a percentage of it, so.
That's just my thought.
So commercial goes from nineteen to thirty-five, industrial goes from thirty to thirty-five.
Because the industrial pays that, and you need to decide also, um, if you're gonna raise the eleven dollars and twenty-five cent per demand kilowatt charge, or if you're gonna leave that the same.
Do, do we get charged a certain figure on that as well?
What we actually get charged on is our peak demand gets set by, what, it used to be during carnival, it used to be that, that, that carnival Saturday or whatever, when it was so hot, that would, that would be our peak demand. Now, I don't know if they're still doing that, but we do pay for our peak demand on our WAPA and our mean bills.
So if we pay for peak demand on our WAPA mean bills, and them have increased, we should increase the demand. As well.
I just don't know that you should, whether you would want to increase it.
The same percentage.
The same percentage, because you're already getting the increase in the base fee and the kilowatt charge, because the industrial kilowatts are, what, four cents, four, four and a half cents per kilowatt, where our residential kilowatt right now is eight cents? Because they pay that eleven dollars and twenty-five cents per demand, and, and some of those bills are, well, a lot of those bills, as you can see on the sheet, are thousands, thousands of dollars, and, and those aren't the highest.
So you're thinking the fifteen percent just on the all kilowatts, leave the demand at where it is, or give the demand a slight?
Does it give the peak? What was question, sorry?
Are you thinking fifteen percent on the all kilowatts, go fifteen percent on that, because we've done it everywhere?
Well, I definitely think.
Have the demand stay.
The fifteen percent on the kilowatts, um, I was gonna say, if you raise the demand any, you know, raise it to eleven fifty or eleven, I mean.
Yeah, just a slight increase.
A slight increase.
Fifty-six cents would be five percent.
What was it?
If you raised it five percent, it'd be fifty-six cents on the demand.
If you, if you want to.
So go eleven seventy-five, eleven seventy-five.
Yeah, eleven seventy-five, yeah.
So WAPA does do a.
Right.
A demand charge, but like in July last year, it was all built through mean, we didn't have anything through WAPA.
Sure, because they're our secondary.
Yeah, and WAPA.
WAPA's our first, and means the secondary.
But WAPA had no demand charge.
Sure.
Or they have a demand charge, but we got no.
That gives us our fifteen percent.
And we still are playing drought, drought Adams.
B R G has made one, that gives us that plus a little cushion, because we've increased some of the bases a little more than, than all.
Now, are we going to, I know we want to review this in a year, but are we just gonna set like a three percent for next year and the year after?
Didn't B R G want fifteen twice?
They did. Same with.
They wanted twice, okay.
Kay, what was your, your demand kilowatts, you were going from eleven twenty-five to eleven?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay.
Be just shy of five percent.
Okay. Peak load, that's it.
So electric, maybe we don't do the same as we've done with sewer and water, where we do them all to a year, and we just know, next year when we do.
Yeah.
Water and sewer, we just need to look at electric at the same time, just not build it in, but right now, and see how this actually.
How it plays out with our.
Of course, uh, see what else decides might, might not show up in town.
Because even, even on your, on your wire, they were talking, you know, five, twenty-five and twenty-five.
Yeah, and we.
And, and we, we bumped it enough, you may not have to do that high, but you might have to do five percent instead of crystal.
So in, in the reading, when you put the, uh, when you put the total together, uh, do we not, do we not even put in there that we need to discuss next year, because I mean, we just need to know, we gotta talk about this next year.
What if we got expansion?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, we just know we have to talk about it, but not set it in the, in the, uh, not set it in the, uh, in the resolution that we.
All right, so you don't know what you're, what you're dealing with.
This year, this year is the beginning of, and we know we're gonna have to increase next year, we feel where we are, but not put it in, keep it simple on all three of the, on all three of the resolutions.
Now, I don't have dollar figures to put in the resolutions when we read them, other than the base fees, because my phone isn't.
Does that matter, I mean, does that affect us in any way?
What?
Does that affect us legally in any way if we don't have the exact?
No, it's, because we're putting it, and we can do that on the next one.
It's percentages right now, and you'll have dollars, and you can fix.
Right, or I can take the time to go do it, but.
I think, I think.
I feel like we can.
The percentages are good, we know where we're at, and you can have those adjusted for two, so now, right there, we can have those.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you exempt from the discussion on those?
So, no, just a minute. So if I did our water, sewer, and electric on our residential, folks in town at the base with the, with the, I went the minimums, um, it's twenty-eight sixty-three a month increase.
For all three?
That's, if I did everything correctly.
So it's three hundred and fifty bucks roughly?
So somebody mentioned about.
Yeah, we wanna see that, yeah, that's a.
So approximately thirty bucks a month. Now, granted, if you're a six thousand gallon a month water user, it's gonna be more, if you're a bigger electric user, it's gonna be more. It could be up to forty. Doing this.
Yep.
Is that all the discussion we're ready for?
I just wanted to make sure everybody did that.
I understand thirty bucks is rough, okay, thank you for bringing that in.
Okay, we'll go on to the sewer utility rate ordinance five thirty-seven. What were the numbers, Kay?
Okay, so it's thirty-seven fifty-seven for the base, and it was a fifteen percent increase in the per gallon price. It was eight ninety-six per gallons, and we're gonna increase that by fifteen percent.
We'll approve that first meeting.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Rule call.
Jensen?
Yes.
Stankamp? Waltman?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Okay, and ordinance five thirty-six, what are those numbers?
Okay, base rate went to twenty-four sixty-nine. With a fifteen percent, a twenty percent increase. To, I believe it's gonna be five dollars and sixty-four cents, it was twenty percent over four dollars and seventy cents, and then outside city limits is a hundred and fifty percent of inside city limits rates, puts it at thirty-seven oh four. And eight forty-six, I believe, again, twenty percent increase from a seven oh five.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion on ordinance five thirty-six, it's stated by Kay.
Okay, Dale, you made the motion, Dave seconded it?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Stankamp?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, what's your electric rate, five thirty-five?
Swear now, so that you guys, you know, we're all making the motion, so they can be us all equal. Like I was.
Your turn then.
I know. Should look to see which one was the biggest one.
For the monthly residential, seventeen fifty is correct?
Okay, seventeen fifty, plus a fifteen percent increase, uh, it was eight cents, will increase that fifteen percent for the first thousand, and then anything over a thousand was six oh seven, and we'll do a fifteen percent increase there. Then on rural, you're changing the base rate to thirty-five dollars, the first two thousand kilowatts was at nine point five cents, we're gonna increase fifteen percent there. Anything over two thousand was at five point seven cents, you're gonna do a fifteen percent increase there. Then we go to commercial, you're gonna do a thirty-five dollar base rate there, you're gonna do a fifteen percent increase there, which the first two thousand was at nine dollars, or nine dollars, nine point four cents. And anything over two thousand, it was five point eight one cents, and we'll do a fifteen percent increase there. Then when you go on to industrial, the customer charge will go from thirty dollars to thirty-five dollars. The kilowatts, which were four point four seven five cents per kilowatt, is gonna go up by fifteen percent, and the demand charge kilowatts, which were eleven dollars and twenty-five cents, are now gonna go to eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Is the motion approved?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Jensen?
Yes.
Stankamp?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Okay, we have building permits, any questions on any of them, Eric, they're all fine.
Well, they're fine.
We should approve the building permits.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Rule call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Stankamp?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, we have a plan to consider the change of the accounts for new late production trucks.
We're not changing it by this motion, it just says we're considering moving to it fiscal year, that's all this is, we have to right now.
I'll make that motion.
Second that.
Rule call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Stankamp?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Thanks, Eric.
Plan for housing expansion?
Alright, so this agenda item, um, just bringing us up to date, so you have various projects that you've been looking at, um, including the outlet area, outlet twenty, which is there by the viaduct, if I'm understanding this, and then the Lakewood partnership out there by Dixieland. So how do you want to proceed? I, I think at this point in time, financially, you would have a difficult time proceeding with all those, so I don't know if you want to do, uh, just that we're gonna continue to explore that, how you want to work on looking at options for possible housing in the future for Lakeview.
Well, I'd like to see something happen about these, just for the fact that we've got all this stuff in the ground, it's ready to go, we seem to be dragging our feet, or I guess I'd like to clear that possibility up.
So it's the same developer, if I understand it, it's one developer that thinks he wants to do three different projects in town, correct?
Correct.
So, and he wants city support, correct?
Correct.
And I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting, so-
Yep.
But why, why would this, and correct me if I'm mistaken, why do, if we have one developer, why can't we focus on, and I'm gonna call it the landing project, before we start sticking money into the others? And the Lakewood partner one, there, that needs to go to plan and zoning for what that guy would like to do out there, plus there's an access issue out there. I've explained that to Ms. Wilson, and so has Gary Richter for planning. I just think that we need to sit down with them at some point in time and say, alright, here's where we're at, you know, hypothetically, there could be a whole new developer come in and buy the ground that's for sale on the south side of the lake, and now what do we do there? I mean, we only got so much of the money tree. And I, I know by our code, we're obligated to do circumvent.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, we can't tell them no.
So, I think for the plan, what we really need to do, and, and we'll get a meeting lined up, to sit down with them and figure out, okay, what, what, what is your long-term one, two, three projects? Again, making sure they understand, and, and I think part of the problem with the landing over there is they, they're not, the agreement with Bobby isn't really, that's, that's not all coming together quite, quite the way. That would be ideal for all of us, just because we've already dumped that much money into the infrastructure on that side. It'd be a great place for them to start, while we want another budget year, or partial, partial, you know, end of the next fiscal year, so that we could budget something for one of the other two projects, or even a small amount for both of those projects, and then, you know, continue with whatever we need to over a couple of years. So, I think, I think what we need to do is, we, we need to, we need to have a sit down and talk to them, and, and so, we'll, we'll get that lined up, and, and we'll get everybody on the same page. I know there's been some confusion about some things that both sides have wanted and needed, and I think we just need everybody in the same room again, now that we've got this, we have the administration now, and, and we need to get everybody back on the same page.
Judy has a question.
Judy, come on.
The whole housing issue came up about nine years ago, because there was an article in the Hoynes Register, Lakeview was on the list of fifteen towns in Iowa who had the highest percentage of over eighty, sixty-five, and the lowest percentage of under fifteen. I brought that to the council's attention, so they formed this housing committee that met faithfully every month while Scott was here. Our whole deal is to get affordable housing, the landing is not going to help with affordable housing, I don't think, because it's going to appeal to summer people, lake people, it's not gonna help bring in young families for our school, to keep our school viable, that's what we need to work on. I know my street has some young people on it, but when I look at my neighborhood, the southeast, southwest part of town, sorry, I can go house after house after house that has sold, and has been bought by a retired person, or a single person that comes here and works maybe out of town, they are not bringing young families in to keep us a viable community. I think the main thing we have to emphasize is affordable housing, and I don't think the landing is gonna provide that.
Well, the only, the only thing that we look at with the landing is, we've already spent so much money-
I understand that.
And if we've got a developer that would like to do three projects that include affordable housing, affordable to us doesn't mean we can put in city streets and sewers right now, because we don't have that money.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's step one to get him here and commit him to three projects-
As long as he agrees that then, after that, it's gonna be affordable housing in outlet twenty, or out-
Well, and he had, so, this is the problem with this developer, is-
Can I just mention one more thing?
Yeah, but-
We were curious, the housing committee, and so we discussed, uh, checked into the statistics last year. Our situation has gotten worse since we started this whole idea of getting affordable housing nine years ago.
I, I totally agree with you that affordable housing, I mean, I don't know what we classify affordable housing, but here's, here's, here's the, the developer, and I'll use outlet twenty for an example, at first was gonna build not affordable housing in there.
Outlet twenty was always affordable housing.
Not, not this developer.
Oh, not this developer?
Not this developer, that, and it's the same developer that's talking about all three different places.
Yes, okay.
So that doesn't, and, and then, he come in with a number of, let's just say, eight houses, and then now all of a sudden, the number went to four houses, and it, and it's changed, so we're not sure what's really going on there. And then the Dixieland, I'm gonna call it Dixieland, it's not Lakewood Partners, it's Dixieland area, that is probably more close to affordable housing on one hand, because there's some triplexes and sixplexes in that proposed, but it's not zoned for that, plus there's no access in and out of there. You know, there's an easement to get in and out of there, but there's no access for a road.
I understand that.
And, so we're trying to figure out, as a council, we've invested money at the landing, if he wants to build these higher-end places, let him start there. Now, I'm gonna throw a wrench into things here, I've had two people approach me in the last sixty days, maybe ninety, about the outlet twenty area. We've had that cleared off now before, so at least four years, and nothing's happened, and they'd like to see it go to, up for a chance to buy. Now, now, now it's not gonna be, neither one of these two people are gonna develop it for-
Housing.
Affordable housing, but-
When we, when it was purchased, and when it was cleared, that was the understanding, that was going to be in affordable housing, and there were going to be either twelve, it was either twelve or eighteen units on there.
Well, we haven't had any developer come to us wanting to do that in the last three and a half years, since I've been on the council. And unfortunately, in 2020, things changed drastically for what it cost to build a place.
And, and that leads me to my question, and I keep asking this, but if you were to build a house, what is affordable housing?
I think it's considered less than two-twenty or something like that.
What kind of house are you gonna get for two-twenty?
Well, like a duplex or a, a townhouse or something like that.
So what are they asking for the one down here?
The duplex down by me, it was almost three hundred, but the duplexes up by the school are about, um, two, about two hundred, but I think Paul's gonna be putting on decks, which will, and probably a garage plus some-
Alright, so, them two, Paul's up there, they haven't sold yet, correct?
Now, the one housing meeting, I think you were there, but I sat in with Region Twelve, they talked about the fact that if the landing houses, yes, they might be more expensive, right, but then somebody in town who doesn't want to maintain their yard anymore, or who goes south for six months out of the year, would buy one of those-
That's true.
And then their house now becomes available.
That's true.
Trickle down, it's a trickle down.
Right, right, you, you may not start out with, with affordable housing when you build something, but somebody may want to upgrade, or, you know, move to town, move into a condo where they don't have to do yard work, and their house then becomes available.
Right.
Except the price that these houses are going like that.
Right, but you can't control, I mean-
Well, and that's, that interest rates.
I mean, it's a real, we have a real problem, well, the whole, the whole country has a real problem with affordable housing.
And we can't hear you either. They're working on it.
I don't know if the microphone is turned on.
Oh, good lord.
Yep, we're working on it.
I can, I can just hear someone, that's somebody else.
Who's trying to talk?
Brandy, I think, and Vicki.
Here's-
Here was it?
Oh, that's, oh, it's very, huh?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Nice job, George.
Alright, good job. Let me take you out here. Alright, I know that I've been in there and visiting with you guys about three different potential projects, um, Bob Terrill's been one of them, and you guys have to understand, that's privately owned property, so until Bobby Terrill decides to do some of the things that he needs to do, we're not gonna be able to buy that property over there, so that's out of the question right now. Um, we talked to you about the property by outlet twenty first, almost eleven months ago, and last thing, you guys are working on the urban renewal area, so we can do TIF and get something going, and I just found out recently, and that's not moving anywhere. And the other property, we would like to do something on too, but I'm hearing that there's gonna be issues with the driveway there, but nobody can provide me with the documentation that I need to prove that. So that's, that's something that we all need to discuss and try to get it figured out. Um, both of those projects, we're looking at doing workforce housing tax credit applications on, so it would be workforce housing.
Good to know. So, can we meet tomorrow around three o'clock, Brandy?
Yeah, I'm happy to meet, but, um, we're coming down to the deadline for these workforce housing tax credit applications, so we need to know if the city of Lakeview's behind us on this project, or we need to just, you know, forget we're having these conversations. And we're just, at, at this point, it feels like we're, we're spinning wheels on this, and, you know, as your, your past county economic development director, I really want to see this project happen in Lakeview, and I know it's gonna be successful, we know the need for housing there, we've been talking about for, for years, so here you have a reputable developer, ready to build some housing in Lakeview, and all we have to do is look at the problems that you guys think there are, find ways to solve them, and then we'll get going on something.
Brandy, the first thing you need is a resolution of support, would that be correct?
Yeah, we'll need a resolution of support for that, but we also need to know that we're not gonna find a roadblock getting access to a property, and, and that's where, you know, a lot of multifamily would happen out there on that property, you guys changed zoning to R five on that years ago, so I know you want to develop it, so let's get something done, let's get moving on it.
So.
Nice, Steve.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just for a quick minute, um, one, um, I would like to see at least representatives from the housing committee involved in some of these talks, because, um, since Scott left, the housing committee has pretty much not been involved in any of these discussions, and I, I just think we might be able to be helpful, and then, two, I think going back to maybe six years ago, um, Mike Frank came to the council meeting somewhere, I have the date written down, and, and, and told us we should be working on housing at that time, we should borrow a billion dollars, whatever we needed to do, we needed to get housing, so I know there's support from the council in some degree, so I think like Brandy said, we just need to find some common ground here. Um, workforce housing is huge for EVAC GO, and, and so outlet twenty is the perfect place, I, I wouldn't want to see that sold before we've exhausted every effort to get housing there, so that's all I have, thank you.
So Brandy, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
So, back to the, I'm gonna call it the Dixieland or Lakewood Partners area, we both know what we're-
Yeah.
Uh, that, that was zoned to R five, but this drawing that you provided us shows some sixplexes? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
So that's not allowed in R five? My question is-
Hi.
If, if, if I'm, if I'm reading correctly.
Yeah, that's a preliminary drawing, so things can get changed, but we're at the point, where if we keep proceeding with this, and keep having these same conversations and not get anywhere, you know, we just need to use some direction, are you guys willing to work with us? Willing to help us get access to that property with the private driveway, that's already there, and we'll see what we can do out there that makes sense for everybody?
The city doesn't own that drive. Wait, you and I discussed that, the city does not own that drive.
Right, there's an easement, there's one with the property.
But they could own that drive. You just have to think outside of the box and know.
Well, if, if I could interject here for a second, uh, this is Chris Mason, I'm the current SAGD director, um, but they discussed proposing, you guys, using an HOA configuration inside that, which would make that a private drive access, which would not require the city owning it, so if the property easement's going to pass through, it's all the land, uh, that would change it, it would not be a city access point, it would just be a private drive access point from there, so the city would not have to be involved in that stage of the issue.
Well, so the last time, so Chris, last time a developer looked at that, that driveway, or that is owned differently than the groundowner, and it's just an easement through there, an access easement through there. Correct? So it's not, and it's not wide enough for a street?
If it's not wide enough for the street, can you send me some of the information that says what your guys' requirements are for how wide that should be? I've asked for those, but I haven't received them, yes, I received zoning information for that land out there, but I have not received any of that information.
Yeah, I, I believe we can get that for you.
She didn't ask me.
It's about twenty-nine feet, isn't it?
Well, let's get, let's get that information, and it shouldn't take very long to get that information, we'll have that information tomorrow, uh, for you at our three o'clock meeting.
I mean, we, and the easement, it shows the easement's fifty foot wide. I'm assuming there's plenty enough room there to get a driveway back to that property, I think county highways are only maybe twenty-two to twenty-four feet wide.
I know minor roadway, uh, public street easements for a minor roadway is twenty-nine foot curb back to curb back, I think major right-of-way is thirty-one foot to curb back, if I remember correctly.
Dale, do you know where the easement is?
No, I don't. It's with Brenner. Because Brenner owns that ground.
Okay, we'll see what we can do to get that information together by tomorrow, is that okay, Brandy?
Yep, I will see you guys tomorrow.
Okay, what else, what else would you need from us, anything? This I goes?
Is, is this something that's gonna require the city to give visiting with planning and zoning, is there a meeting coming up, are you guys willing to do special meetings to make this happen?
Absolutely. If need be, you bet. In my opinion.
Yeah.
One thing that I just quickly interjected on here too, is that discussing using of TIF funds for this, and not a lot, we're looking at debt limit for the city's borrowing capabilities, and we've got some big projects coming up on the horizon too, uh, one thing to bear in mind, that on a TIF project, so say you take a TIF loan out at a half a million dollars, uh, over a ten-year period, on a TIF project, the only debt limit that, or the only number that you have to assess to your annual debt limit is the current year's contribution, so if you're on a ten-year with five hundred thousand, it's fifty thousand plus your fees and everything for the year. Uh, I did discuss this with, uh, Iowa Economic Development Authority, and said that we have a lot of unfunded mandates coming down from the state that our small towns are having to deal with right now, and so we're all kind of up against clock on debt limit here, and our ability to offer incentive- And our ability to offer incentive programs like TIF to be able to do infrastructure work is kind of being limited. Is there any way we can get around this? Uh, I, I, that must have been a good question, because it's still TIBDROM, and they are looking into it. So I should hope playoffs, maybe some possible answers for that too by the end of the week here, so. Well, if we can keep the ball rolling, we are, we're happy to work with you guys and do it every weekend to make this happen, because housing is our first priority, uh, as it comes to anything. There's no point in us trying to attract a business that needs three hundred employees when we have maybe a hundred available in the whole county. So if we keep the ball rolling, we're happy to help. Let us know what we can do in the meantime.
Do they have any more questions?
Guess we'll meet tomorrow.
Brandy, I guess we'll try to meet tomorrow at three o'clock.
Alright, see you guys then.
You wanna come? You, you, are you available?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Or Vicki?
Vicki, are you around?
I'm not actually on the committee at all. My term is up.
Oh.
But, um, Vick, um, Kelly Burrows on, uh, Vicki.
Oh, you can say Kelly's around.
I mean, I come because I'm interested, but I'm not, I'm not on the committee.
Vicki, are you still there? That would be a no.
She's in U.D.
Yeah, I am here, sorry. Vicki, who else is all on the housing committee? I don't remember the new people.
Can you find a, bring a few...
You want to know everybody?
No, just bring a few tomorrow, three o'clock. Can you do that?
You want me to be there?
Three o'clock.
I, I, I'll, I'll call Judy. I could not be there at three. I have a doctor's appointment, but, um...
Is it Jackie Wallace on?
I'll see what I can do. I'll see what I can do. Yes, Jackie Wallace is on the committee.
Vicki, if you could round up a couple of them, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, alright. No, we'll meet tomorrow at three o'clock. Okay, we'll move on. A application twelve to Sandy Construction for the community center.
Okay, so I know we did not approve this last, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, met with Nick from Sandy, and, uh, so some of the things, I think, are, all the things that they've done are included in the list. Uh, some of the bigger projects, they tore that concrete back out, put the new concrete back in. Uh, but we have a plan for, for the gutters on the east side of the building. And so, what, what the plan is, there are five gutters, I believe, that drain off the road. The one clear on the north end is, is already on the outside of the sidewalk, so they should be able to drain that right to the pond without connecting the other. You have three of them in a row between the two sidewalks that come into the building. So what we talked about is connecting those three, and then they'll cut the concrete or board, whatever they need to do to get it to the pond. The one furthest to the south, right by the main entrance, that we would change. Right now, the, the drain is next to the building, so it's draining on the sidewalk. What we've asked them to do is run the drain clear out to the end of the gutter, and so it would drain down kind of where those pillars are, right to the, the pond. And so that's the plan. I feel like Sam's gonna do that. Uh, Nick was very good to talk with that day, um, and I, I guess it's up to John, but, uh, you still have the retainage fees of approximately, I don't know, five percent? A hundred and some thousand dollars that you still have for them.
What, what did he say about the penalty, per day penalty? Are they done, done now?
No.
No. I had not really talked to him about the penalty. He, he talked a little bit about it. I think this is gonna be a bit difficult to prove. Uh, and the only reason I say that is because we dealt with it at the school a little bit. Um, if there were weather things, did we go out and check to make sure that there were days with weather? There were, he brought up that there were things that we didn't have done. I don't know if it was electric or something.
We never had power till December fourth.
Yeah, so they weren't able to do things because of some of the things on our end.
Or no heat.
So...
About six pages of no response from Bean Street Cam, no response from the city, so they just waited three weeks and then went ahead and did it.
But...
They have fixed the ceiling tiles that were all not painted correctly. Those are done.
Steps are fixed?
They know about it. I don't think we're fixed yet. Have they fixed the steps?
The steps, no, they haven't fixed them. They haven't been back.
Yeah. Well, we've got that other retainage.
We got the other retainage.
The retainage, according to this, is five percent, um, the retainage is a hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirty-six cents. After this payment, um, if it's approved of a hundred and ten, eight oh seven, eighty-four, it leaves the balance to finish the project is a hundred and fifty thousand, seven oh seven, eighty-seven, and that includes the retainage. Now, I know Dale mentioned, I think it was you, that the rock and whatnot that goes around the outside is part of the project.
Yeah, the initial bid packet was, all landscaping was to be part of it. Seating, that, in the, that, between the sidewalk and the building was the day Jeff and I were out there. We shouldn't be responding to that.
And Nick talked about that he's willing to do, put some dirt down, put some cloth. I don't think that's an issue at all.
Put river rock on top.
I just want to make sure that that's not our expense.
He's done all the dirt work. He's done. And then they fixed the north retention ponds.
And then who's coming in to seed it then?
Sandy is.
That is for sure Sandy?
Well, he's gonna have somebody do it.
Okay. It's in, it's in the bid packet, okay. So after this payment, there's still a hundred and fifty-some thousand? Yes.
Hundred and fifty thousand, right. Balance to finish plus retainage is a hundred and fifty, seven oh seven, eighty-seven.
I make, I make the wish to make.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Jensen?
Yes.
Stan Camp?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Beckman?
No.
Okay, we've got a review of the interview schedule for city minister position.
Alright, so I've got the nineteenth lined up, which will be the next council meeting. Um, what I, you would need to clear your schedules starting at, uh, twelve-thirty that day, and we would have, uh, interviews beginning at twelve-thirty, and then running up until the council meeting. Um, so we'd have a group with the employees, and then one person would be at the council, and then after roughly forty-five minutes to an hour, they would change and do an interview with the opposite, and then the next two people would come in. One thing that I would like you, and maybe you did this last time, to consider, would there be some volunteers from the community that if I had the first two people come in at eleven-thirty, that we could have somebody drive them around the town, show them the town a little bit, and then their interview would start at twelve-thirty, and then the next group, I need a couple more volunteers that could drive some, the next group around at one-thirty, and their interviews would start at two-thirty. And so I would just need, if you got some names, or who'd... Town Pride or South Town or that maybe? Some, yeah. You know, I need two, two groups, because there'll be two people each time that, that would be driving around. Probably be a little uncomfortable with the same, same car driving around, but... And then, uh, thoughts on this? I've talked to Diane at the library. We could either do one, the council could interview here and the employees at the library, or you could maybe do them both at the library. I don't think there's a good spot here to have two interviews without going upstairs, and offices are pretty small. Um, so, and it's not, and it's not that far apart, but it would take five minutes for people to switch if we have one group at the library and our group here. That's better than them crossing paths coming in and out of meeting rooms, I think. Yeah, some kind of... Okay.
How many interviews we have?
Five total.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. That's all.
Everybody have anything else? Not motion to adjourn?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Me and adjourn. Thanks, everyone.